Jeremy and his guys are sick and tired of putting salt on your streets, I can tell you that right now. Jeremy, do you still have some salt left?
We do.
Okay. It's going fast. Well, welcome to our February meeting, ladies and gentlemen. We're very honored to have Terry Lee with Student Impact with us, going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Terry, where are you? There he is, all right, if you would come forward.
Mayor, we're gonna have Alex lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Should we do the Pledge of Allegiance first?
We're gonna do that, but you can both come forward, if you would, please. You know, Student Impact is such a huge part of our city and Danielle Easterhouse, so you're gonna pray. And Alex, at the last minute, volunteered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise? Alex?
Let's make some prayers.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Alex, thank you. Jerry?
Bill, we just thank you for this opportunity to gather and discuss things that matter to us. And we pray that those things that matter to us would matter to you, and that we would speak thinking of what you would desire of us, for us and for our city. We pray in times of conflict that there would be understanding, that in times of anger we might find, and in times of disruption, we might find time to care for each other. What I pray for everyone on this council, everyone that has leadership responsibility, Lord, that they would be open to what you have for them, that they would be open to what we have for them, and that they would lead with honor, that they would lead with integrity, and that they would lead the way that you would want them to lead. But we pray all of this in your mighty and holy name, in all of God's people's sake.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. President Ake, at your meeting.
Thank you, sir. There is a change in the agenda for tonight. It was a last-minute change, but ordinance eighteen zero four, the Wheeler Landing PUD, will not be heard tonight. It's continued till our next meeting. So, that is a change on your agenda. At this time, I'd ask for approval of the minutes from January twenty-second.
So moved.
I have a motion by Joe.
Second.
I have a second from Bob Horkey.
Don't we have to establish a quorum, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, we should. Before we take any official action, we should establish the presence of a quorum. All right, thank you.
Here.
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 Here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Keen, appreciate that. So, I have a motion before us to approve the city council minutes from January twenty-second. Is there any discussion? Any additions or corrections? All right, hearing none. Those in favor of approving the minutes is stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Hearing none, the minutes are passed. Moving on to the approval of claims, I entertain a motion to approve claims as stated.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Keen, a second by Cindy Spuljeric. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask that you approve claims by signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. All right, hearing none, the claims are approved, thank you. While we don't have any special presentation tonight, I'd like to recognize the Cub Scouts from Cub Pack One Twenty-Five. I'm happy to have them here. Would you please stand up? We appreciate all you do, and you're working toward becoming Boy Scouts, I hear, and the moving up ceremony is in a couple of weeks. We're very proud of the work that you do as Cub Scouts, and we wish you well in Boy Scouts. You serve us well, and we hope that you all set your eyes on Eagle and you'll be back for recognition at some point in the future. Thank you. All right, moving into the rest of the agenda, under old business, we have one item. It's ordinance eighteen oh three, amended policies, procedures, and fee schedules. Mr. Zager.
Yes, sir. Ordinance eighteen oh three is our semi-annual, annual adoption of all the changes in the policies and procedures throughout the departments under your control here in the city. Those have been uploaded as best they can over the last couple of weeks onto our system. Those that haven't been, have been tried to send to you directly. If there are any questions, I can answer those now. During the last couple of weeks, I've had a couple of questions that I think I've handled and not been followed up upon afterward.
Okay, thank you. At this time, it is up for adoption. I consider a motion.
Move to approve ordinance eighteen oh three, the amended policies, procedures, and fee schedule.
Second. I have a second from Joe Edwards. Is there any council discussion about this matter? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve Boodler?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. The first item for consideration is the interlocal agreement between Hamilton County, Indiana, and City of Westfield regarding a service agreement concerning nine eleven and emergency dispatch services. Is Todd presenting?
No, I'll get it.
I got it, I guess. As you know, the dispatch and emergency services are broadcast through
the county, and that is done governmentally through an interlocal agreement between us and the county. The costs are decided upon the members of those that are in it and the amount of use it has. These agreements are in place for approximately five years. This would be for five years going forward to 2023.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion.
Move that we adopt the interlocal agreement for the E-nine-one and emergency dispatch services.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions?
I have a few questions, and maybe is Todd here? Yeah. I'm guessing you'd be the one to ask. It seems like, like the costs on this are huge.
Well, you're in kindred spirits, Madam Counselor.
I thought I'd make that public knowledge here, and to say that I, I don't know what can be done. Obviously, this is a formula that they use at the county.
I get to talk, or you go talk.
No, I, Madam Counsel, I believe I should yield the microphone to the mayor, as he is a member of the executive oversight board for the dispatch center, and he would give you a little better insight than what I can, probably.
Wow, that's, I'm surprised you did that, but... This has been a issue for several years now. The nine-one-one center is in agency of the county government, whereas before it was part of the sheriff's office several years ago. And when a state law was passed many years ago that said that a county can have no more than one dispatch center with a backup, made sense. Instead of every city having its own, we put all of our efforts together. It was funded by the cities of Hamilton County and towns in a very, almost undescribable fashion. Today, the four cities pay for this service based on the number of calls for service that each city generates. Some of our outlying smaller towns do not participate in the fee, yet. They are being mandated to do so, I think effective next year, or nineteen, or twenty, maybe. So this whole process is still really being worked through. The present structure is that it is overseen by the four mayors and a county commissioner. The agreed-upon method right now is that each city pays according to how many calls for service it initiates the prior year. Some of us don't feel that's quite appropriate because we do a lot of preventative, preventative calls for service, and we're working through changing that formula right now. Ultimately, and nearly every member of our council that oversees this agrees that the service should eventually be a hundred percent funded by the county through an appropriate levy action there, so that the cities don't have to count how many times they call for service. And that is actually the way it's moving. It's just going to take a couple of years to get there. So, we are negotiating the lowest possible price, Westfield share right now, and I can tell you that our share next year will actually go down, but I'm not excited about it, and we're working to get it changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I entertain a motion, please. Oh, we have a motion before us. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next item up is the interlocal agreement between Hamilton County and the city concerning use of health and wellness services. Mr. Bertrand. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, this interlocal, I'm very proud of. It is, over the long term, will be a cost-saving measure as it relates to our expense and the healthcare benefits that we provide to our much-valued employees. This, this particular project commenced back last April, and through a coop, cooperative effort, collaborative effort with the county, specifically Commissioner Steve Dillinger, the, the county, and I think Commissioner Harebrink's here, about five years ago, is that correct, established their own employee, what is, was called a clinic, now known as a health center. We've been invited to participate in the county's health center and well, health and wellness center. We're the first municipality to do that across, across Hamilton County. We've done some planned redesigns with our current healthcare plan with Anthem, enabled us to use existing dollars that's already budgeted to help fund the costs of this, that over the long term will mitigate any sharp increases that we might otherwise see with Anthem renewals. And as you know, attracting and retaining talented people is a very competitive element. When, when running a business, we do compete with the private sector, and we believe that this access to high-quality, low-cost healthcare through a, the facility at Noblesville, just adjacent to the hospital, and then when our new hospital opens sometime this summer, we'll have a facility here as well. So it's a co, it's a co-shared health and wellness center, everything from routine acute care to pharmaceutical needs, and I am very proud that we're in this agreement with the county, creating scale that otherwise we could not do on our own. And we, as of this past Friday, we've had nine of our folks go through the wellness center for acute care, and it's going quite well. So, I'm very proud of it, very proud of the partnership that we've created with the commissioners in Hamilton County, and this matters before you for your adoption.
All right, thank you, Todd. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. So, a motion by Dr. Keen, a second by Cindy Spuljeric. Any further Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. For those that may have missed the announcement and came in late, ordinance eighteen oh four, Wheeler Landing PUD is continued to our next meeting. So with that, we'll move on to ordinance eighteen oh five, the Hall and House PUD District Amendment, Ms. Amanda Rodu. Thank you.
Good evening, President, members of the council. My name is Amanda Rabidou with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for introduction is a proposal for an amendment to the Hall and House Planned Unit Development District. For your reference, the parcels affected by this amendment are located, is located immediately north of the Hampton Inn, just south of State Road Thirty-two on Wheeler Road. The proposed PUD amendment includes modifications to the minimum building setback standards and the landscaping standards in order to accommodate the city's extension of the frontage road connecting to Wheeler Road and restrictions to utility easements. Tonight is an introduction, and the proposal will follow the normal zoning process. It is scheduled for a public hearing at the Plan Commission's March fifth meeting. Brad Shreggy with American Structure Point is here on behalf of the petitioner. He will not be giving a presentation, but is available to answer any questions you may have. I'm available as well if you have any questions of staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for the petitioner or staff? Any discussion? All right, we'll move it on to APC for a public hearing. Thank you. At this time, that concludes our regular order of business. If, if residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. All right, you'll have three minutes for your presentation.
Do I have five, Jim, because I represent the legislature?
We... Excuse me?
Who cares?
Thank you.
Pardon? Yes, she's, no, no, that's just a two-page.
Okay.
Okay, I'll talk as fast as I can with my sore throat here. Okay. Obviously, my name is Mike Johns. I'm the president of Bainbridge Homewares Association. I'm also the managing partner of BMR Properties, the developer of Bainbridge, and I'm here representing the association this evening. During the past six months, the members of the Bainbridge Homewares Association have had an opportunity to meet with Mayor Cook and with all of the council members here on an individual basis. At this time, we'd like to again thank each one of you for your time and for, that you gave to us in your commitment. Our purpose in attending tonight's council meeting is to formally present to the city council the presentation that we gave to each one of you on an individual basis during our meetings. We've included in our handouts three complete copies of the presentation, a thumbnail, or thumb drive of the presentation, and individual copy of two, a two-page flyer, which includes the petition signed by our, by all of our neighbors, as well as a visual aid of what the property might look like if the road continued. The petition that we are presenting to the city council is signed by members of the Bainbridge HOA and is supported by each and every member of our community. The petition is a petition, is a position statement by the Homewares Association and by the members of Bainbridge. It expresses our opposition to a planned road extension from Westfield Boulevard, of Westfield Boulevard, from one hundred fifty-first street to Greyhound Pass, as it appears currently in the Westfield Thoroughfare Plan. The reasons for opposing this extension include: The proposed road would be locally, would be located directly across the street from our new custom-built home sites, ending just steps away from one resident's swimming pool. The road extension would require cutting down a line of very tall trees that currently buffers Bainbridge, the Bainbridge community, from the nearby commercial areas and the highway, and gives our community its distinctive privacy, serenity, and character. Such a road would give us a direct view of Target, Goodwill, US Thirty-One, and other commercial establishments. It would create more noise than we're already experiencing with Route Thirty-One. It would bring more traffic into our quiet community. It would significantly diminish the attractiveness and appeal of our community. It would cause an ecological harm. It would reduce our property values and our quality of life. For these reasons, we are opposed to any road changes that might result in an encroachment of any type of non-residential operation or enterprise which would distract from the existing ambience, natural beauty, and functional infrastructure of our neighborhood. Part two of the handout that we just handed out to you is a visual interpretation of the effect of extending Westfield Boulevard south of one hundred fifty-first street, roundabout, and what it would have in our neighborhood. Clearly, the removal of the current buffers by the proposed road and the accompanying commercial rezoning would have a tremendously negative impact upon the Bainbridge neighborhood. And for these reasons, we request that the city pass an amendment to the thoroughfare plan eliminating this proposed road. We would like to thank President Jim Ake for agreeing to advise us when the thoroughfare plan comes up for its yearly review, and we'd like to request an opportunity to participate in the review process with respect to the road with the purpose of removing the proposed road appendage from the master plan. We greatly appreciate the insurances that we've received from all of the council members, as well as Mayor Cook, that the proposed extension is not up for consideration in the near future. We understand that extending the road over the existing pond would be extremely expensive and possibly cost prohibitive. We understand further that no engineering studies have been completed detailing where the road could go or directed, or even what the cost would be. Now, while these assurances are comforting to us, we also are aware that a current property owner of one of, of part of the land where the road is proposed to be constructed has been telling people that the city has advised him that they will be acquiring his property within two years to construct the road. So for that reason, he's currently renting out his, the house on his property as he waits for the city to purchase rather than selling his property. Usually, I advise my neighbors not to put too much stock into this type of hearsay, but I do know the individual. He's an attorney. He's a, he's fairly conservative person, so it's, it's hard for me to believe that there's not some part of truth in his statement. Based on our conversations and the presentation that we just gave you, I'm quite sure that you, as a council, understand where our concerns are. We certainly appreciate your guidance in advising us what actions we might be able to take to modify the thoroughfare plan, and we promise and make the commitment that we'll stay in touch with the council, because we're committed to take what acts, every actions are necessary to modify the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, would anybody else like to address the council? All right. City Council comments, Mr. Hoover from APC.
APC met last Monday evening. We had a relatively short agenda, but it took a little while. The APC approved the Osborne Trails landscaping plan, a overall development plan. Also approved the Henkel at Thirty-One overall development plan and site plan. We held public hearings on Oak Ridge Point PUD District Amendment, which we heard earlier this evening. We had a public hearing for Compton PUD District, which is a proposal to build a dentist office and some other small offices in a, in a location that currently has a dentist office. And the last item was the Hawthorne Ridge, single-family home development on SF Two. That was it. That was a development plan and site plan review for Hawthorne Ridge.
Thank you, Steve. Any, any other council member wish to comment? All right, I'd just like to wish everybody have Valentine's Day on Wednesday, and we had the Melt Trail event, it was very successful out at Grand Park, and there's a little thing called the, the Home Show going on there. I'm sure Mayor would like to comment on that. So, it's your, it's over to you, Mayor.
All right, Jim, thanks a lot. Yeah, we did have a Saturday. It was cold. Angie Smitherman and her associate Alexa Ling, on her first inaugural event, Alexa did a fantastic job. It's a, takes so much work to put all that together. I think we had over, nearly four hundred runners. I still don't understand why anybody would run, but they did. And we had a couple of the local indie stations were broadcasting out there live, and looked like everybody had a great time. I don't understand it, but they did. They had costumes, they were doing face painting. One really neat thing I know they set up was a lot of people could make and sign Valentines that will end up in the hands tomorrow, I think, over at Welbrook of Westfield, which is our healthcare partner out there at Grand Park. So that should bring some, some smiles to some of the residents over there. So that was a great job. Mentioned ICE when we opened up. I think Chief Marcus, I think we saw well over a dozen dispatches yesterday just simply located falls. So people were going down right and left. It was, yeah, it was, it was, it was terrible, and private, mostly in driveways and sidewalks, and Jeremy's guys got a jump on it, I think about three AM out there on the streets. We eventually did every street, every neighborhood, every cul-de-sac, but of course, we never do it quite quickly enough. But you did a good job on that, Jeremy, and I don't think there were, well, I don't know that we had any serious accidents. For that, we are most grateful. We've been very, very fortunate this winter, even the bad weather. Our accidents are actually down, which I think is a huge tribute to Joel and his staff, and to Jeremy and his staff on these roads. So thank you very much, guys. Christopher, is our new website up and running?
Yes, sir.
Yes, doing good? All the links are in the right place?
Yes.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you. Check out the new and revised website. And as Jim alluded to, this past weekend, we had the Suburban Indiana House, Indiana Home and Outdoor Garden Show, and the Center Ring out at G-PAC. It was, it was neat. We were there for several hours, just to see the yellow flowers were absolutely beautiful. But to see that kind of production in a facility that we thought we'd only see soccer in was, it's, it's pretty fun. And for those of you that didn't make it, that same show will be back out there November twentieth, or I'm sorry, September twentieth through twenty-third, coming back this fall. So they're very happy with the attendance there. One last thing, and you're gonna hear this probably from now through July. We are obviously looking very forward to the Indianapolis Colts presence, presence in July and August here in the city. And one of the first things that we're going to be doing is moving towards a lot of blue. And so our production people are talking about having a huge blue theme with all of our residents. We're going to be putting out a lot of blue flowers in our public spaces, but we intend to have some competition with this, and we're trying to get people to send in... get people to send in their photographs on their property. That'll be by late June, and we'll be talking more and more about what we're going to do with blue. Straight.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Have a good day.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.